That's the assassins that are dead. Yeah, that's nobody. That's when you want to stay secret and... You can't hear anonymity so you can just lob it in it. All right, are we other ways ready to go? Everybody all set?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Okay, we'll go with call to order. Madam City Clerk? Can you do the roll call please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Hoffbauer?
Here.
Mayor Potemloa?
Here.
Councilmember Bettencourt?
Hello, I'm here.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Hi, I'm here.
Councilmember Bishop?
Here.
All right, public comments on closed session items 4.1 through 4.4. Who wants to handle that? JJ or Mr. Beck?
I'm happy reading into the record.
That'd be great.
Make sure I'm going in order here.
Start part one.
All right. Public record from a guest user to the honorable members of the Palmdale City Council. This e-comment is submitted by LeoTech Electronics USA LLC, LeoTech, for the council's consideration as you evaluate the presentation to you in closed session on the subject of the dispute concerning LeoTech's agreement with the city for the LED luminaires, the light fixtures atop street light poles. LeoTech believes the council will benefit from the additional information below and appreciates your consideration. In 2018, the city contracted with LeoTech a San Jose, California-based innovator in the field of LED lighting to purchase 18,000 to be installed on the street light poles around the city. The city alleges that certain wiring issues within a portion of the luminaires created an electrocution risk to the public. But the facts do not support the claim. There is no evidence that any LeoTech luminaire ever created such a risk. LeoTech asked the council to note that this dispute began with an incident in which a dog was shocked when it urinated on a light pole on a rainy night. There has been no showing that the electrification of that light pole was caused by the luminaire. More importantly, despite the fact that many thousands of luminaires have been since been inspected, the city cannot identify any LeoTech luminaire that has caused a risk of shock or caused any light pole to be electrified. Not one. Luminaires are new, state-of-the-art, and each one is inspected and tested before it is shipped. By contrast, the light poles to which the luminaires have been affixed are old and may have not been well-maintained with cracks and other significant wiring issues resulting from age and degradation over time. All of the luminaires have functioned properly, and they still do to this day. None of the luminaires have prematurely burned out, dimmed, otherwise failed, or resulted in any risk of shock. They have performed as warranted. LeoTech has built and shipped over 2 million luminaires and not once experienced a safety issue the city is claiming. The evidence shows that the vendor, the city hired to install luminaires, did not do so correctly and failed to follow either LeoTech's specifications for installation or the city's instructions for the installation, both of which made it that each luminaire must be grounded. From the outset through present, LeoTech honored its contract and the warranty terms. LeoTech was responsible only for supplying the luminaires, not installing them, and not for any other component or light poles. LeoTech's warranty and its bid... Sorry.
Your time is?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
LeoTech's... I'm sorry. Your honor, okay. LeoTech's warranty and its bid for the contract for luminaires both made clear that under no circumstances LeoTech warranting for labor, costs of either repair, replacement, or reinstatement of the luminaires. Part seven, right? LeoTech's 10-year limited warranty, which is part of the contract with the city, is limited to repair, replacement of the unit with a comparable product, and the customer's remedy under this warranty is exclusive. In no event shall LeoTech be liable for interruption of business, loss, profits, or indirect or consequential damages. The deviations and exceptions forming LeoTech's bid submitted in response to the city's RFP, final part, which the city accepted as part of the contract, certainly made clear that we do not offer any warranty regarding labor. We believe the best course for all concern is to avoid unnecessary litigation by finding a way for the parties to work together now and in the future. We are hopeful that these issues can be resolved collaboratively. End of comment.
Time.
All right. Do we want to deal with any of these other public comments at this time? Or is it that these are... How do they put these? I don't know where they put these numbers on there.
Top left, mayor, they're the public comments section.
Okay, this is down the line over here. Okay, that's it there. All right. Okay, so now we got number four. Presentation by the city attorney.
Thank you, your honor. Those items to be discussed in closed session are just those listed on the agenda. However, I believe, your honor, wish to prescribe a motion for an additional item pursuant to the government code 54954.2B2, something that needs immediate action. If that's correct, I can continue with just a bit of a background of that process.
Yes, sir, please.
Thank you. The purpose of this is, under this government code, an item can be brought to the agenda if it came to light or became known after the agenda was posted and there's a need for immediate action. That in this case specifically being an initiation of litigation to the city council to discuss legal action to protect the voting rights of the citizens of Palmdale. Now, this action will require four of the five council members to affirm it in order for it to be added to the agenda and then brought into closed session. And that motion that I'll describe here would need to be... The council needed to determine this by four-fifths vote, that a need exists to take action immediately, and the need for action came after the agenda was posted, including the finding the need was not known by council or staff prior to the posting of the agenda. So the mayor will provide a broad contextual background and then make a motion to the effect of the above. If that's still... Am I understanding correctly, your honor?
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's correct. So without getting into the specifics, because I was advised not to get into specifics at this point, but the issue came up and I got the information on Saturday. The agenda had already been posted, and by the time we get to our next meeting, the issue will become stale at that point. So we need to be able to have this discussion and make a decision if we want to proceed on it. But I was advised that because of the nature of the issue that we need to have that as a closed session. So, and I apologize for not being able to get into a lot more specificity, but the city attorney will be able to elaborate on that after we have a discussion about if we want to... What and how we want to address the problem, so.
Well, in order for the council members to make a decision on this, there has to be some relevant information without getting into a lot of details.
Correct.
Essentially, it involves the lack of voting places west of the 14 freeway or even in fact the west of the...
But it'll differ. Right, it's the broad discussion describing the impetus for it and the basis for meeting those two tenants, right? That it came to light after the agenda was posted and that there's a need for immediate action.
Right.
Well, I don't know how that became an immediate action. We talked about this at our last council meeting. How is it all of a sudden an urgent issue? We talked about it at our last council meeting.
Okay, so you had the list?
I don't live on the west side, so...
Exactly, so the list was not made...
Did we talk about this?
Huh?
I thought we had already talked about this.
I'm sorry, but I can't understand.
I said I thought we had already talked about this at the last council meeting.
No, not this, not this part of it. Because the information was not made available until Saturday yet. I can find the exact time, so.
So what exactly are we voting on?
Whether or not to add the agenda to the item by four fifths vote, in which case it will occur in a closed session, session will happen, at which point the council then can still determine whether or not they intend to take action or not.
What's the reason to make the motion? I'll make the motion.
All right, that was my motion, so...
Oh, second it then.
If you want to second it, that'd be great. Okay, perfect. Okay, so, City Clerk, can you call a roll on it, please?
Yes. Mayor Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Mayor Potemloa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bettencourt?
No.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
I don't understand why anybody would be against putting voting places in an area where there is none.
Well, it's election time, it's election time. That's why you got all this...
What was the... I'm sorry, hold on. What was the vote for?
To add the item to the agenda so we could discuss it.
Yeah, are we not adding that?
Yes.
Okay, we are.
Yes, we are.
And so to clarify for the record, it'll be added as item 4.5 in closed session.
Okay, and anything else you wanted to elaborate on on the agenda?
Yeah, thank you, your honor.
Excellent, okay. So we'll go ahead and go back there and it'll be fun. So we'll go ahead and go back there and it'll be fun.
Putting up with the little delay there. We had some serious serious issues that impact a lot of people in our city that we had to address, so. So let's see. So we are on number six at this time, which will be the announcement of the city attorney of the items discussed in closed session. Mr. Beck?
Thank you, Your Honor. All members of the city council were present and able to participate in the vote. With regard to item 4.1, real estate negotiations, the city council was providing an update on this matter and an update on the project and directed the city negotiator to act as such to effectuate the purchase of the described properties and continued forward with the project. There's no further reportable action at this time on that item. With regard to item 4.2, anticipated litigation in one case, the city council was providing an update on the matter and unanimously authorized settlement terms. And if approved by the opposition, Leo Tech regarding a dispute involving streetlights directed the city attorney's office to prepare a settlement agreement or other documents to that effect and authorized the city manager to execute any documents necessary to effectuate the settlement. There's no further reportable action at that time, at this time. With regard to item 4.3, City of Palmdale versus Westwood Enterprises, the city council has provided an update on the matter and unanimously authorized settlement terms and if approved by the opposition, directed the city attorney's office to prepare a settlement agreement or other documents to that effect and authorized the city manager to execute any documents necessary to effectuate the settlement. There's no further reportable action at this time on that item. With regard to item 4.4, anticipated litigation in one case, the city council has provided an update on the matter and unanimously authorized settlement terms modifying the terms agreed to at the July 14th, 2020 meeting to Crown Castle to resolve the contract dispute arising from telecommunications facilities located at Desert Sands Park and authorized the city manager to execute any documents necessary to effectuate the settlement. There's no further reportable action at this time. With regard to item 4.5, initiation of litigation, the city council has provided an update on this matter by staff and council members and unanimously authorized the city attorney's office to retain outside counsel and to take actions up to and including initiation of litigation for the purposes as described in the closed session announcement to protect the voting rights of the citizens of the city of Palmdale. There's no further reportable action at this time, and that concludes my report. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. So we'll go ahead and we'll adjourn to 5:00 PM closed session meeting. We'll call to order the 7 o'clock city council and what is the SA again? Successor agency. They keep throwing these terms at us. So we'll call to order 7 o'clock city council and successor agency meetings. I will do a pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. In honor of our troops, I would like especially to mention that it was just the anniversary of Sergeant Owens passing his execution, murder, and I would like to keep him in our honor tonight and close in his adjourned meeting in his honor. John, could you lead the pledge tonight, sir? Thank you. Before we end tonight, if anybody else on the council remembers anyone else that we should adjourn in memory of, please bring it to our attention before the end of the meeting and we'll do so. Madam City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Chair Hoffbauer, Mayor Vice Chair Loa,
Here.
Councilmember Director Betancourt,
Here.
Councilmember Director Carrillo,
Here.
And Councilmember Director Bishop.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Excellent. We got 11.1. Palmdale Kiwanis West members Richard Olmstead and Alan Hefter. We've got an attaboy they're going to be bringing to the city manager. So as they say, come on down. JJ, you want to? Mayor Hoffbauer, councilmembers, staff, residents. Thank you for this opportunity to address the city council this evening. I'm Richard Olmstead, a member of the Kiwanis Club of Palmdale West. I currently serve as the secretary and the treasurer of the club. With me is a club member, Alan Hefter, and I also want to recognize councilmember Carrillo is also a member of our Kiwanis Club. Kiwanis Club of Palmdale West has been serving the children of the Antelope Valley for over 49 years now. We were chartered in September 2nd, 1971. And over those years, we have enjoyed the support of the city of Palmdale in the conduct of our service projects and fundraising activities. One such event is our rubber duck race. We recently conducted our 15th annual rubber duck race. It was much different this year. No spectators. And but we want to thank Tim and the entire staff at Drytown for their support in the conduct of this year's virtual race. Our thanks also go to Mayor Hoffbauer for his participation in retrieving the winning ducks. He even got wet.
Real wet.
Real wet. Kiwanis International is a worldwide organization of volunteers. Our main mission is to improve our world, one child and one community at a time. Our clubs are grouped administratively into divisions and our divisions are combined into a district. And Palmdale West is in the California Nevada Hawaii District. We had a visitation, an official visitation of our Kiwanis Governor at the end of August, and we had a bunch of awards and recognitions that we wanted to give out that night. This represents a donation to our Kiwanis District Foundation. And our recipient wasn't available that evening. Seems like he was on a trip back to Washington DC to promote Space Command here in our valley. So we were pleased that Marie Ritchie joined us that evening in his stead. I want to read what the Kiwanis Governor had to say about city manager JJ Murphy. JJ Murphy was promoted to city manager in December 2019 after serving as assistant city manager since April 2018. JJ brought with him experience as city manager in Wilkes Barre, Pennsylvania and Hobbs, New Mexico. He quickly immersed himself into the city happenings and has become one of the most ardent supporters of our first responders, our military, our veterans, and our children. JJ is leading the efforts to be the home of the new US Space Command in developing a Palmdale Airport, a multimodal transportation center, and ensuring affordable housing for our residents. Under the guidance of JJ, the city of Palmdale has also implemented much-needed programs such as free childcare for first responders and essential workers, free PPE distribution to schools and hospitals, at-home recreation kits, and expanded the food distribution. The hashtag Palmdale Cares initiative was implemented to help residents adjust to the restrictions and difficulties brought by the pandemic. JJ Murphy, by example, is living that initiative and is showing the residents of Palmdale that he truly cares about their well-being. The Kiwanis Club of Palmdale West is pleased to present a community service award to JJ Murphy, city manager, city of Palmdale. JJ, there's your congratulations. Thank you very much for all your support and for the support of the city. Mayor, thank you for the time. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you, Marie.
I better put my mask on.
Yeah, put your mask on or you know what.
You can't tell where I'm from?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You can have a stand-in guy to drown for me next time? Is that it? Perfect. All right, so now we have item 11.2. And this is our, this is our monthly rotation of the helmet.
So I couldn't even say anything besides thank you, so. I guess we ended up in DC, Mayor. I, there was a reason they were, Marie took over. I don't know if they nominated me there and Juan, however it happened, but you know.
You know what the story is? When you miss it from the meeting, you get volunteered.
We, but that was great. So, all right, I think I'm composed now. So yes, this is our monthly Warrior Award. I want to read the narrative and then I want to bring up something, a new twist. And maybe Councilman Loa has had something to do with this. He gave me an idea. So this was submitted by Marie. Renee, would you come up here, stand next to me or six feet from me? Renee has played an integral role in assisting the city with technology, especially during the pandemic. He quickly responds to help desk requests and emails to help install and test cameras and equipment to facilitate virtual meetings. He is at attendance at every city council meeting to ensure that all the equipment is functional and assists staff when presentations or other needs are required. He has been extremely reliable and responsive. He always handles himself in a professional manner and a calm manner that is greatly appreciated when staff has a technical issue or maybe we might be a little frustrated. His work in the background keeps all of us productive to benefit the community. And despite your basketball team going out last week, we were all crushed with that. It really is a pleasure because you, you really do make us non-techies actually not just sound smart, but look smart. And you're the engine behind how we operate and how all the technology here. I remember the first year or so when everyone was taking the test drive. It was a lot of running up here and teaching, but I think it's been really good. And so what I would like to do is point out that Councilman Loa came to my office, we're going to put that on. You have hair product, so it should, it should be okay. But he, and I don't want to speak for you, but you said, this is great that you give this to them and they look silly at night and get the picture and then they keep it at their desk for two weeks, but what are they, what's the takeaway? Right? What are they? So we have the Warrior Coin now, and you'll be the first one handed the Warrior Coin. We will get pictures with everybody who's, who's received the Warrior Award and we will have a a plaque hanging with everybody's picture because it's not just a two-week recognition. It's a recognition of all your hard work. This wasn't something that Marie saw in two weeks and we were scrambling. There were other people nominated, but you deserve it. So thanks for having me. Put this on now.
PG3.
Oh, you're cold, cold.
John, don't ask him about yourself next, please.
No, so I just wanted to say that what I do is only possible because of my team. This is one of the strongest IT teams that I've been a part of. And yeah, it's truly a team effort, truly blessed to come to work and enjoy what I do and enjoy the people that I work with, so. And that goes for everyone in the city, so super. Thank you, guys.
Renee, before you go, congratulations and I want you to know that you won a nomination over someone that I nominated for this award. I actually nominated JJ Murphy for this award this month. So you actually beat JJ Murphy in getting the nomination. So congratulations.
Can I see the call?
So like JJ said, this is our go-to guy. When we're sitting in there and we're throwing our phones against the wall and slamming the laptop shut, this is the guy that comes and says, no, 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 don't break it. I can take care of this for you. So he's, he's the guy that solves all that for us, so. he's the guy that solves all that for us. So I appreciate, I appreciate that.
So J.J., thank you for bringing that coin to fruition. I think it's about Mr. Looking Coin.
Great. It's staff who does it, Richard. A lot of us come up with ideas, but the people who actually get it done are on the ground. So appreciated. So, speaking of people get things done on the ground, John, would you step up? Mayor, would you come down? We have the honor to name John Parsiman, the Veteran of the Year. We have a proclamation. Mayor, I'm going to read the proclamation and...
To John Parsiman?
Yeah, and then we'll make some comments after that, or?
That's great.
Okay. Alright. John, who owns, for those of you who don't know on TV, Armed Services Autobody, shameless plug. Whereas John served in the US Army from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and two in an infantry platoon with the Tenth Mountain Division, two-four Infantry Regiment based in Fort Drum, New York. And whereas John has been a resident in the In Oak Valley since two thousand and nineteen, but his desire to help fellow veterans is evident. John serves as Vice President of Vets for Veterans as well as a, as well as working with Coffee for Vets, Blue Star Moms, and working alongside our first responders. He is also the owner of Armed Services Autobody in Palmdale, where he employs an exclusive veteran staff and provides hand-on, hands-on job training in an effort to help veterans avoid homelessness and joblessness. Whereas Armed Services Autobody is involved in several community projects: monthly food drive, food giveaway, a veteran training program, car care class, as well as hosting a community restoration project to raise funds for veterans facing hardships. And whereas a portion of the profits from Armed Services Autobody are donated to local veteran support organizations. And whereas John believes the In Oak Valley community and community partners can work together to make the In Oak Valley a better place to live and that there is value in giving back to our community. Now therefore, the Mayor of the city of Palmdale, on behalf of the entire city council, name John Parsiman as Palmdale's twenty-twenty Veteran of the Year and do hereby deem and honor to extend this commendation to John for his dedication and years of service to the veterans of our community.
So I'm gonna take a second here, as this was coming up, coming down the calendar, and saw that, that this was, was time to nominate somebody here for this, to call up somebody to come up here, and it's your turn in the barrel. But you know what? This was a total no-brainer for me this year, because I go over to this guy's shop, and he's, he's got everybody working, and, and, and working, and they're not goofing around. And he's teaching them. And, and then when they're not working, they clear everything out, and they stack the place full of food, and bring veterans in, and then he grabs me and says, you've got a truck, here, go deliver this. It's all good, man. I, you know, when you, when you're taking money literally out of your own pocket to make this stuff work by doing the stuff that he does, I think that that's really, that, that really says a lot, a lot for this guy. And, and just watching that operation, and watching those guys learning stuff over there, and everybody's always dirty, and, and getting their, you know, getting their fingernails dirty, and getting in and, and, and learning the trade, and, and I personally see any kind of work that you, you do. And I just, you know, I don't know what else to say at this point. I just, it just was, this just seemed like the real obvious choice this year. The, the time that you've been here, you've just bent over backwards. And as a resident, I appreciate that. So.
Want to say something?
Yes. Can I say a couple words? I know Jack always tells me to talk...
Those guys out there are done clapping.
Can I take this off for a sec? I had to write, I had to write this so Jack doesn't get mad at me. Jack is the President of Vets for Veterans. First of all, I want to thank you guys. I am honored and humbled to receive this award, not only for what it stands, but also who the last recipient of this award was. I will never be able to fill Tommy's shoes, as he was a giant. And his legacy will live forever in us, like an ongoing ripple effect created by a simple act of kindness or good deed. He had the, he had a big heart and a special love for our veterans, brothers and sisters. My mission was always simple, and I chose to accept it. From the first day I stepped in AV, I, to provide a judgment-free environment where veterans can learn hands-on skills and use our facility as a stepping stone to move to bigger and better things. Knowing firsthand how challenging getting back to your feet can be, I'm determined to do my part and be part of a change I want to see in the world. After all, I have the love and support of my family and friends. I know it will not be easy. It will take much effort and time, but I believe that we are on the right track. My love for our veterans is unconditional, and I believe that our veterans can do everything that they put their minds to. The proof is actually at our shop, just like the mayor mentioned. Everything done at our shop is done by veterans. I try to keep it short, but I want to go through and thank some people that had a lot to do with, with me and my growing. First of all, I want to thank Tom and Megan, Hills and Digger. I want to thank Jack and the entire organization of Vets for Veterans. Tom was a special guy. He saw something in me, and I think it was the ball of energy, and he knew how to direct it to the right way. I miss him every day. I, I wish I can, you know, ask him for advice, especially at certain days. I, I want to thank our two-fourteen Infantry Golden Dragon leadership for squaring me away. I wanted to thank Mayor Steve Hofbauer for not only being the mayor, doing all this for our community, but also being a personal customer. I want to thank J.J. Murphy, a brother, again in arms, always standing behind all the small businesses, including mine. I wanted to thank the entire city council members that supported me through the entire process. I want to thank Congressman Mike Garcia, all the veterans in AV, all the veteran organizations, but a couple of specific veterans I wanted to thank. One is, I call him Big Tony. It's Tony Totally, you know. Tony is one of the guys that, he, he's everywhere. He reaches everybody. He doesn't ask for anything. One of the true examples of altruism, which also Tom taught me the meaning of it. I want to thank Jesse Martinez, who ended up being a, kind of like the guinea pig throughout our own program, and with the help of the entire community and Kevin Sanders, he was able to secure a job with Northrop Grumman. I wanted to thank Charles Wilson, always has my back, Myra Duarte, Ryan Goats, and all of our friends. Lastly, I want to thank my mother, my father, my sister, my wife, who always takes these trips with me throughout just life. And she's always got my back, whether right or wrong. And I know she's always there, and I know I can get this all done. So I just want to thank everybody for this special honor. And I will promise that until the last breath of my, you know, in my body, I will do everything that I can to hold up my end of the bargain.
Thank you.
So now I'm gonna spring this on J.J. I hadn't told him this yet. So Megan, are you ready? So here's, I, so, this, they, they were done with this, but I want this moving forward.
Take your bet.
Tommy Hills and Digger Award.
Yes.
That's, that's what this is. Yeah, yeah, okay.
They're gonna see my eyes.
I want to see your eyes.
Sexy dog.
You were married to him ten minutes ago, right?
Out there.
You married your sister, right?
No. I'm the sister. Oh.
That was Kevin. Oh, troublemaker.
Kevin's playing school's, I have all the time.
They just keep turning their feet, that's all.
Hold on, hold on. Okay, yeah, yeah. Alright. You guys can go out and eat the cake if you want, because I, I know some of those guys, there won't be any left. I do this from, I do this from this side here. So, so this is Crime Prevention Month, and I gotta tell you, when you take a look at our stats, and you take a look at what our team is doing, and, and that's team with a capital T. There's no one person out there that solves all this, although you're the one that's gonna come up here on this. But it, it's about the team approach. It's a, it's an approach that, that other communities are looking to model after. Other communities are calling us going, what are you guys doing? And why are you doing it so good? And crime stats are down. We have one of the lowest claim and lawsuit rates against our sheriff's station out of all the stations. And I get the crow about that at the liability board, you guys. So, appreciate that. Just quit wrecking the cars. The, I got it. But anyways, so Carrie and her crew over there are really vital, because it's that, it's that interface between, it's that staff interface between Carrie, Mike, and, and that whole team over there, where it's able to blend in and make it work. So, whereas the vitality of our city depends on how safe we keep our homes, our neighborhoods and schools, our workplaces and our communities. Crime and fear of crime destroy trust in others and civic institutions, and threatens a community's health, prosperity, and quality of life. People of all ages must be made aware of what can be done to, to prevent themselves, their families, their neighbors, and their coworkers from being harmed by crime. People of all ages must be aware of the dangers of technology, technology crime, and how they can protect themselves from becoming victim. The personal injury, financial loss, community deterioration resulting from crime are intolerable and require investment from the whole community. Crime prevention initiatives must include self-protection and security, but they must also go beyond these to promote collaborative efforts to make neighborhoods safer for all ages and develop positive educational and recreational opportunities for young people. Adults must invest time, resources, and policy support in effective prevention and intervention strategies for youth and for teens, and I'll say adults as well, and must be engaged in driving crime from their communities and their neighborhoods. Effective crime prevention programs excel because of partnerships among law enforcement, other governmental agencies, civic groups, schools, the faith-based community, businesses, and individuals that they're out there to help nurture communal, communal responsibility and instill pride. So now therefore, I, Steve Hofbauer, Mayor Palmdale, on behalf of our entire city council, proclaim October twenty-twenty as Crime Prevention Month. And I urge all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and individuals to invest the power of prevention and work together to make Palmdale even safer, stronger, and a more caring community. So, Carrie, you're, you got the, it's your turn in the barrel on this. You want to add something to that? Pretty sure you wrote that, but...
No, Mayor, you're right. We are a small but mighty team in public safety, and our team, the reason we are mighty is because of our team outside of just our public safety realm. It's our first responders. It's all of our law enforcement. And we absolutely, positively could not do what we do if it wasn't for our residents and our business community as well. It's that dynamic relationship, that ability for them to reach out to us, our ability to go out and reach out to them, that really makes what we do in, in the city of Palmdale work. And we're all working together, and we want to just continue on with that and show that Palmdale is a great place to live and a great place to thrive. And we're, we're your team. You need us. Reach out to us. And we really appreciate all our partners that we have out there.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna just add to that briefly here. When she says to reach out, and she's gonna get back to you, I gotta tell you something. I, I am amazed that when I send something over, when I get a citizen issue or business that's got a concern or something like that, they're getting back to me telling me, oh, my goodness, they sent somebody over, or they, somebody called me back already, you know? I didn't expect that so soon. But yeah, we do expect that. And that's when it goes more than a few days, that's, that's unusual. It really is. And, and the thing that I think that people appreciate is that you guys bring solutions to them, you know? I mean, even if somebody did something dumb, I mean, you tell them, here's how we can do it better in the future. And that's what this really is about. It's about how do we do things better every day? So John, when we do these pictures, I want to get to council here, but I'd like to get to Skipper and Mike and the guys that come up here, as well as Chee, you want to come up? Because this is all about, it's all about crime prevention and all that kind of stuff, too, huh? What do you think?
Absolutely.
Kids want to stand up?
Who there?
Oh, remember where it's at? You get up?
Where's, where's our phones?
So we have a, here's our critter of the month, and we have a kitty. And I know we have lots of kitties over there. This one is Sunshine, an active sixteen-year-old attention seeker. Folks, you get a lot of, a lot of critters over there that can use a love, and we're doing pretty good. I think we're well over a hundred percent on our adoption rates over there. Here's another one, Isadora, a relaxed one-year-old who loves lounging. As a cat after, that's a cat I could, that's a cat I could live with. So it's important that if, if, if the critter that you see on the screen is not there, they've got others. is not there, they've got others. And if you do, if you get a, uh, cat, dog, whatever, and you bring your papers over, and you see Carrie over there, we've got a goody bag full of, um, Palmdale swag, uh, that's, uh, that you get for adopting a critter out of our, uh, animal shelter over here on Sierra Highway. So, we had, uh, Isadora and Sunshine.
And Mayor, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, all cats' adoption fees have been waived for the month of October for all cats and kittens.
Okay, so if you couldn't hear that, all fees for adoption?
Kittens.
For cats and kittens have been waived for the month of October.
Yes.
So if you're thinking about a cat, this might be the month, okay? Winner winner, right? And on top of that, you still get a swag bag from Carrie and her crew over there. So, anything else we should know on that?
Yep, there's plenty, and not in a home, so...
Plenty, yeah. So I like to, I like to refer to this as our, these are our, uh, our homeless critters out there, so. Very good. Thank you, City Clerk.
You're welcome.
Alright, uh, number twelve is waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have, uh, Mr. Loa, Ms. Bettencourt? And, uh, we need to electronic, we do this by voice.
Voice.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we have, uh, item number thirteen, public comments.
Mayor, we have, Mayor, we have one speaker, Mr. Douglas Schmidt. Uh, Mr. Behan, will you get him, the burger man? And then, uh...
Okay.
We have one speaker outside who's on fourteen point six, so we'll bring him back later. And then after the, Mr. Schmidt, I have a couple of comments to read.
Okay, so could you state your name for the record?
Yes, I can. My name is Douglas Schmidt, and I live here in Palmdale since nineteen eighty-nine, and raised my family here. First, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak with you. And I'd like to thank you also on your successful completion of the Technology Drive Improvement. Came in under budget. Something unheard of in government, having been involved in it for many years.
Which item are you gonna speak on, sir?
I'm, it's a non-end, non-agenda item.
Okay.
I have a general comment.
Okay.
Okay? So I just wanna compliment the city for getting that completed. So some of the questions I do have, um, why was that put in place? Was it put in place for public safety or for beautification? It's, um, it's a rhetorical question. Oftentimes, when we talk about public safety, particularly our roads, generally extends just primarily to automobiles, being such a, a auto eccentric, um, community. Do we consider the safety of our pedestrians and our walkers when we do these projects? Okay? What about the Avenue R project? That's been online for a long time. A long time. We're talking years now. We have the houses that have been condemned that are now becoming an eyesore amongst the neighborhood. We have increased traffic due to the periplasma shutdown. And with that increased traffic, what we have is more road, the road is getting worse and worse repair. And becoming drastically unsafe for, uh, people who are not in vehicles, cyclists, walkers, things of that nature. So we need to be considerate of that when we talk about these projects. When is that project going to be completed? It was announced at Great Fan Fair, oh, approximately two years ago, and not much has been done, other than doing eminent domain on those homes. People are waiting. People are concerned. People's lives, people who walk on the street, people who ride their bikes on the street. Particularly now, as you see cyclists, uh, continue to go up higher and higher, people are riding their bikes more. But having them go down Avenue R, particularly between, uh, Twentieth East and all the way out to, um, Division Street, they're playing chicken with cars. We don't need that to happen. If the city is more worried about what it's looking like, rather than taking care of the safety of their citizenship, we've missed the point of public service, particularly in the city, where safety is considered prior among. The next point I'd like to bring up, as we talk about the city, is code enforcement. Having lived in this area, Mrs. Bellencourt's, uh, disfar...
You have to wrap up here, you almost done.
Okay. Please have proactive code enforcement, not a reactive code enforcement. I thank you very kind this evening.
So I just wanna let you know, we are as frustrated as you are with the amount of time these things take. We have other agencies that we have to, uh, follow their protocol on these, but the expert on Avenue R and the money that we found on that is that guy that's standing there holding the door open, waiting to speak to you.
Okay, I'll run what I was by him.
Just happens to be the guy.
Okay.
Okay? Very much.
And Mr. Smith, just, just so you know, um, as you're speaking, and we're not responding, we're not legally able to, so for the people that may be watching, thinking that we're just ignoring you, we're not. We're under a legal guideline that says that we can't respond. So I just wanted to make that...
But that guy right there can.
Yeah. I grew up, my dad was on, uh, Board of Supervisors in Bedford County.
Okay, so you understand. I just wasn't sure if I'd been watching.
Totally good.
Okay, good, thank you so much.
You're not offended.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there another public speaker, sir?
Uh, not on the non-agenda items. So I, I'll read the, uh, other ones, other comments.
Why don't we just go through all the public comments, and then we get them underway, okay?
Right, right.
Okay.
Okay, so... Uh, "Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, City Manager J.J. Murphy and staff. I wish to submit this public comment tonight, not as a resident, but as a guest of the city of Palmdale. I work for energy contractor Snyder Electric, a longtime partner in League of California Cities. It is likely we have crossed paths at any of the past league events. I have a grave concern. This concern is for the integrity of our electrical distribution network and how its failure may affect Palmdale. California's grid is in dire need of upgrades and struggles to maintain the current demand for power, resulting in increased risk of fires from sheer overload and what we see happening all over the state this time of the year, rolling blackouts. Critical facilities like City Hall campuses, fire departments, police departments, libraries, corporate yards, and other facilities which serve the public good. These facilities need to remain fully operational in the event of a power outage. The current state of commonly used backup diesel generator is severely limited on capacity, plus the overuse of such equipment results in significant AQMD fines. There is a solution. The, the solution deploys onsite power generating equipment, onsite storage, and the required power management hardware to completely disconnect from the facility, from the grid, and remain fully operational in the event of an extended grid outage of multiple days. Best of all, this solution does not require capital expenditures, so precious capital dollars are preserved. We fund such projects through private equity, and we have, already have a private equity partner ready to come sit down with us to have a discussion. This new development in resiliency is game-changing. The market has never seen this type of disruption. The citizens of Palmdale need this type of full energy security and full energy autonomy, because the utility grid is poised for failure. The only question is when. That said, I seek a meeting with J.J. Murphy at the earliest convenience. My contact information follows this letter. Thank you very much for your attention and consideration. Uh, Mayor and Council, if you, you're okay with that, I'd like, uh, Chuck and his Energy Innovation Team to reach out to this guy, and, uh, they're the experts, they've been dealing with them, uh, so. Chuck, I'll give you this information at the end. Uh, the next, uh, we have, I think, four. And this is on, uh, just Public Comments thirteen. "October," uh, from Marsha Furman. "October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. As a sixteen-year survivor, I can attest to how precious every day is when given the possibility of its being taken away from you. Please make sure yourself, family, and friends follow up on health checks and suspicious physical changes. Thank you." Thirteen, Geshuser. "As a local business owner, I was floored when I received a call from Mayor, who I haven't heard from for over six months, asking me for money for his campaign. Not only that, he had C. Loa on the line, who also wanted money for his campaign, and mentions one of my projects. How many other, others, well, how many others with project that need to go in front of council have you contacted and use that tactic? So if we help you, you will help us. FPPC, FPPC complaint to follow." And I'm reading this as I read it, as it's written, for the public who thinks I can't read.
Mr. Murphy, a lot of the fact that this is a serious accusation, I categorically deny having linked any contribution with any specific project at all. I deny it. Whoever is putting this out is making a false statement.
It's, uh, it's campaign season, and that, that's what people do, so, uh... I, uh, I don't even have a clue what this guy's talking about. And I can tell ya that, uh, there was a guy that had a project before us, and, uh, that was coming up. I wasn't aware of it at the time. And when I found out about it, I said, "I can't take your check." So, there's, uh, there's rules out there. I think we do our best to try to abide by them. But, uh, you know, you can say whatever you want. Saying it and proving it are two different things, though. Thank you.
Okay. Next one, uh, "The AVT Press reported how Lancaster is financing Mayor's, Loa, and Bishop's campaigns. How's that going to affect Palmdale and the deals you're making to expand the landfill right after the election? Didn't you all three met on this deal last week? If this is not corruption, I don't know what is. Bishop benefited from the ABTA buses deal, aren't you on the board? Look at your constituents and tell them how you're turning your back on them."
Yep. Again, I don't know the last time we had a conversation on the, uh, on the landfill, that thing's been going on for years. Bishop hasn't been on the ABTA board for a long time. Go ahead.
"The Rancho Vista Park should be delayed until we see if Measure AV passes. Councilmember Bishop doesn't even back up the measure, but is willing to spend three million dollars on a park. Didn't we all saw what our finances look like if the measure doesn't passes, pass? Seems like Mayor is only interested in having this park for his grandson, since he couldn't get it for his son, his words. Not to mention, the Mayor already spoke to Councilmen Loa and Bishop about approving this park. Isn't illegal."
This park should have been under construction this past summer and ran into some delays, so this has nothing to do with this issue now, so...
And all discussions regarding that park have always been taking place in the public. Insofar as having three council members together at one time, that's not true. We discussed, we've had discussions here, and then individually with the City Manager. Uh, this is, this isn't true.
Are there any others?
No, Mayor, that's a duplicate comment, so I read it now. We will have one, uh, on fourteen six when that item comes up.
Uh, Consent Calendar, you mean, or what?
Right, 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 so, uh, yes. Javier Flores, uh, do you wanna get Javier? I'm sorry.
There we go. What item is this on, sir?
This is on item, uh, fourteen six.
Oh, okay.
Rancho Vista Park.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, I wanna talk, well, actually, I have more questions than anything. I know that, uh, you're about to consider, uh, a park on the West Side. And, uh, I'm wondering how the decisions are being made as to where parks are being allocated and how much money is going to each park? Because I'm seeing just some disparities again, some lack of equity. And I'm wondering if, uh, the number of people is being considered? Uh, is this a, a plan that you're implementing that's years and years old? Uh, or are new numbers being considered? Uh, is it being based on need? Or just, you know, here's the list that we put together twenty years ago, and this is the way it's gonna go? Um, I know that Yellen Park, for example, uh, is clearly, clearly not being funded and supported, uh, the way it needs to, the way it should be, and we're wondering why. So we're seeing disparities, we're seeing discrepancies. Uh, and, uh, and, you know, I'm here to ask questions, you know? Are, is there a plan to ensure equity? To make sure that the parks are going where the need is the greatest? Not based on twenty-year, uh, stats, but on current stats, current population growth, uh, and what, whatnot. So that's really what I'm here for, to ask those questions. Hopefully I can get some answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay.
No, sir.
Alright. So Consent Calendar. Uh, all matters under Consent Calendar have been acted by one motion unless an item is pulled by the council. Uh, we got no public request to pull anything. Uh, does anybody wish to pull any item, uh, on the, uh, on the Consent Calendar at this time?
Fourteen point five and fourteen point six.
Five and six?
And four for me, fourteen point four.
And four. Anything else? Or a motion on all items other than fourteen, four, five, and six?
Vote to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second? Uh, electronic vote, or how do you want it?
Voice.
Voice vote, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Fourteen four. It's a professional consultant agreement with NBS Government Finance Group. Uh, did you have a specific question, sir?
I just wanted to get some clarification on the amount, uh, for this contract. And that's something that we've been talking about for a while, getting the landscape, um, districts, um, to be, you know, individually, uh, responsible for its maintenance. I understand that, uh, practice had been to put all the money into one pot, and then money gets drawn out, uh, if there isn't money available. And I just wanted to know how this consultant is gonna make things different or, uh, more accountable for the LMDs.
Yes, thank you for your question. Customer of Creo, this, this is a contract with NBS Financial, and it's, it's really the, the first, it's a total contract of a hundred and thirty thousand. Phase one is, is a scope of work for fifty thousand of that, at which time we, we will make the decision on exactly how to proceed from there. So their, their goal is to go through all of the districts, see how they've been managed, and come up with best practices for, uh, changing what needs to be changed, and as well as making recommendations on the allocation of the fund balance within all of those districts.
Okay.
I, I'm here to tell ya, from my own personal perspective, that the landscaping on the East Side is worlds away from the landscaping on the West Side.
No, give me a break.
It is, this is, it's a fact. So I'm hoping that these people can help bring some equity to that.
Yeah, we are.
So, so let me, let me, I'm, I, and I can't let that go slay by. A lot of this has to do with, uh, the landscape districts that are voted in or not voted in, and the amount that they're voted in for. Um, we've got a number of them, uh, on the West Side that look bad. But this is exactly why, three city managers ago, I asked for this audit to be done. This is how long it takes for this to happen. And it's so that there is that accountability and equitability, uh, on each of these districts, uh, as far as, um, what they're getting. I mean, I had people bringing me in pictures, and I know that former Public Works guys have shared my photos with you that I had people send me, that you couldn't tell which one was the, was the one that had a landscape district in it, and which one was a failed district, you know? So I think this is really important for the equity, uh, for the, each individual neighborhood. And then when neighborhoods come back as we do this, and they say, "Wait a second, what about my neighborhood? Maybe we give them the opportunity to decide that they wanna have pride in their neighborhood and have a landscape maintenance district as well." And I was shocked with some of the places that didn't have them, but when you walk up and you walk alongside them, you can say, "Oh, uh, this one doesn't have a district," so... Um, but it's, this is about time, and, uh, I really appreciate this thing finally coming forward.
That's the reason why I wanted to have that, uh, clarification from staff, because as you mentioned there, this has been going on for years. And yeah, I, I do get calls to and comments on the way that certain landscaping, uh, looks like along major materials. And sometimes there, there is confusion with residents not knowing how those landscape districts get maintained. And sometimes there is confusion with residents not knowing how those landscape districts get maintained. They don't know that there is an LMD and that's where the money comes from. They just assume that it's because, say, Avenue R or Avenue S, that the city is responsible for maintaining the landscape on the periphery of the residential developments. So this will bring more accountability. And you're correct, Mayor, the purpose of this is to see what districts are generating sufficient funds for the maintenance and identifying those that do not draw the money to maintain that district. And the point of this is that, like you said, if there's not enough money in that district, then there is a process for those residents to vote for an additional amount to be the amount required and necessary to do the maintenance. That's the reason why I wanted to pull this out and hear from staff. And as you said, it's been quite some time, but it looks like we're going in the right direction now with this consultant to identify those districts and see how they are funded. So thank you.
Back in the old days when I was on the audit committee. Okay, so we got, thank you very much. So on that item, 14, four, do we, do I have a motion on that then?
Second.
I have a motion and multiple seconds. City Clerk, take your pick. And all in favor? If somebody's saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, 14.5. This is Chuck, I guess you're still there. This is the capital improvement project, state route 14, Rancho Vista Measure R project. Sir? Now who pulled this one?
I do.
Okay, do you have a specific question?
I do. So I'm just curious as to the disputed amount of 647,000. What's the nature of the dispute? And how is that being, how's that being addressed? In other words, we would approve the project except for that portion of that? And then that would be something that would be either determined or settled outside of this payment?
Correct. And that's liquidated damages. It's pretty common practice. We have some other disputed items in the range of maybe 150,000. And we're certain that those, we feel very strongly that those are not legitimate. And so we are not ready to release the liquidated damages portion of it until we settle on the other. I mean, this is something that we feel very strongly about. We haven't been able to get an answer back from the contractor. And so we need to close the project out, file the notice of completion. But we can continue afterwards to do that negotiation. And so that's the 647 is, I mean, it's in the contract, it's $10,000 a day. And they were late with the project, so, you know, we were way under budget. But they were late. And so we can release those. I mean, it's technically maybe not a real cost. There are costs for staff and other things for that that are real costs within that. But that's the number that's built into the contract.
Right, okay. No, I think, I mean, I think you're spot on in what you're proposing here. But I just wanted to make sure that I was reading this correctly.
Correct.
Okay.
We have a couple of pictures. We don't need to dwell on them. But as it says, their budget was 25 million. Some things were removed from the project, but the change orders to this project were under 5%, which is really very remarkable. We had good project management, good construction manager on the project, and it was quite successful. I won't go too much. Maybe we can go, do I have the clicker? Just some construction, keep going. We've got some decorative concrete and go one more, please. One more, some striping. The lower left there, you can see this is the wall on Avenue Q. We're trying to introduce, this wasn't enough. We're trying to introduce some artistic or some better things on this, and this was the wall feature. We're going to continue to do that. And we are looking for Rancho Vista northbound off-ramp to Rancho Vista off 14. Trying to find some money to do some things to that intersection. Unfortunately, it wasn't in the project description for this, which is why we couldn't do it as a part of this. But we are looking for those funds, Measure R project, or the Measure R money that we have remaining on this project, since it wasn't in the project description, was not eligible for that. But we were working with that city manager to make it clear.
We come in $11 million under, and we can't do something to stabilize the hillside other than throw some hay bales on it?
It's the nature of, well, I mean, it's had some, I hear you loud and clear. It's something that we should have thought of.
I want you to know that I get questions on that every week. When is that going to get done? I said, oh, no, no, it's done.
Staff's looking at every option possible, Mayor. We have been talking about this.
The widening of the off-ramp at Palmdale, the southbound off-ramp at Palmdale Boulevard, that wasn't included as part of the project.
No, it wasn't. That's in a project that is currently probably go to construction in first quarter or maybe late first quarter of next year, '21. So that's really close behind that one. We do have some landscape monuments type features that are built into that project. And when it comes time for us to issue the contract for that work, we will bring back some pictures, some renderings of what that will look like.
Okay, but that also entails some widening of that particular off-ramp.
It does. That off-ramp is widened and it's reconfigured and it'll be longer. So you won't have the people lacking up onto the 14.
Right. So it's nice to hear that you're looking at some ways to add more landscaping on Rancho Vista and off-ramp going north. Because a couple of us actually got an email and it was forwarded to some of the staff. A resident was asking, how come that off-ramp is not as lush as all their off-ramps on the 14 freeway? So just for the benefit of the public, and if that person is listening, staff is looking at ways to rebound that exit with some more landscaping. So thank you for doing that.
Yes, we are, yeah.
That's fine. I would move to approve it.
Okay, you have a motion?
Vote a motion.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, 14, six. Mr. Loa?
Yes. So perhaps this answers, in part, answers Mr. Flores's question. But this issue was taken up in February of 2019, and Rancho Vista Park was made a priority. And now we're confronted with the fact that the lowest bidder has submitted a formal letter to withdraw the bid and now going to someone else that's going to increase the price, perhaps not terribly increased, but nevertheless substantially increased. But what I'm most concerned with is that this park, which I think has been in the works for two decades, is not going to be laid once more. And I think the people in that portion of the city have been anticipating that this park will be provided. There is a lack of park space in the west side, and this begins to address that lack. So I wanted to pull it to find out why there was, and perhaps you can't answer this, but what is the mistake that the lowest bidder is talking about? What mistake did they make? Or did we make a mistake?
No, it was a mistake that they made on their bid. It was, you know, a mistake was made. If you read the bidder, they gave their reasons within five days. It was accepted by the city attorney as being legitimate. It was a bid that was made materially different than they intended it to be. And they have the right under the public contracting code. And I'm sure the city attorney can maybe quote that better than me, obviously. But that they have the right to do that as long as they can prove those kind of things. So it's unfortunate, and, you know, it's not somebody that we've dealt with before. So I don't know if they've got a history of this, but they are within their rights as long as they show that.
But the bid was made several months ago, right? Wasn't this bid made several months ago?
The project, let's see, seven bids received on September 15th.
Of this year?
Yes.
And then within five days, you're saying they submitted a letter of withdrawal? Okay. Well, I just hope that we press forward with this as quickly as possible. I think the people have been waiting long enough.
So I just, the one thing I want to thank the staff for bringing us back the memo that Chuck had initiated. And I just want to make sure that we keep in mind that there's also an expectation that fund balances and our next priority to move forward is going to be whatever we can do with whatever funds we've got over at Yellen Park. And I know there's some proposals for some public-private partnerships and things like that over there. I just think we need to make sure we keep our eye on the ball, so to speak here. Because I don't want that one to go and start getting stretched out either, you know? We spend quite a bit of our time at the parks over there because the parks, as was eloquently pointed out by the speaker, there isn't inequity. We have some of the best parks in the Antelope Valley over there on the east side. Mazari Park is great. We're over there at Yellen all the time at the dog park. So, you know, I just want to make sure that Yellen does not get lost in this process either.
So can I just ask?
It's next up. The design is going forward, and that is, that's the next one, as I understand. I mean, as far as we're working on it.
Right.
I thank you guys for bringing this forward, and nobody loves and respects having the parks in our community like I do. It's very important for our residents to have accessible parks close to their neighborhoods. But I am having a little heartburn for the fact that the price did increase and the financial health of our city is the number one priority for me right now moving forward. I wouldn't be opposed to postponing the vote on this until we know more about what the financial future looks for our city.
These funds were budgeted and allocated a long time ago.
Are these funds coming out of the general fund or is this coming out of a special fund? Where does this $3 million come from?
It's the general fund loan, the park fund, $5 million.
So it does affect our general fund. And this is my concern, and I think I'm with Bishop on this, is that we're asking the taxpayers to look at an increase in their sales tax to support our programs and such. I don't know that this will be a fiscally sound idea to spend $3 million on a park at this time until we find out what our budget's going to be, whether that measure passes or not. I don't know. I don't think that it could hurt to wait a month to see if that measure passes.
This isn't contingent upon that issue. This has already been budgeted.
So this money's already been removed from the general fund?
Yes, it's over in the park fund.
And that's the issue that I wanted to address with the allocation of that money. Yeah, in February 5th, the council gave direction to staff to take a $5 million loan so that we can complete the projects that had been started. And that's on the staff report as an attachment. And the $5 million, the discussion, as I recall, and as stated on the staff report as an attachment, was so that we could finish the projects that had been started. I talked about those funds being equally distributed. And the previous city manager sent us a memo dated August 26th, which is on your diaries on the council. And it talks about how the money was allocated. And when I saw this back in August of 2019, I asked how this came about because the amount allocated for each park that the council prioritized is listed here. Yellen Park, Rancho Vista, Arne Quinones, and Oasis Park, which is what the direction was. But the amount allocated for each park is not equitable. For instance, Yellen Park Phase 1 was allocated $280,000 for design. And I know that, what, four or five months ago, it came to the council, the approval of the working drawings. We went through a whole exercise. We had community meetings where people told us what they wanted to see on their parks. And the council approved the actual working drawings for Yellen Park. And then at the time, I asked this previous city manager, how come Rancho Vista has been allocated $2.5 million for design and construction? Again, this is in 2019. And I had a little bit of heartburn at the time because I don't recall that being the discussion that the council had. I didn't get an answer. I recall asking the mayor how that came about. And somebody must have given staff direction to allocate that money the way that it was presented on this memo. And again, Yellen Park, $280,000 for design. Rancho Vista Park, $2.5 million for design and construction. Arne Quinones, $140,000 for design. Oasis Park improvements, $100,000 for design and construction. So when we talk about equitable distribution of resources, I don't see that being equitable. I don't know how the rest of the council feels about this, but someone gave staff direction to allocate.
The council as a whole did, and when they were prioritized because of the substantial completion.
So I don't recall the council allocating specific amounts.
No, we did not. We provided the priority list. And the issue was that Rancho Vista Park had all the preliminary grading, all the offsites, much of the onsites. All those things were all done over, that was all done over 10 years ago when the fire station was brought in. And the community gave up that corner for the fire station over there.
So again, my question is, how was this allocation of the $5 million put specifically for each park? I understand what you're saying, that there was already some improvements to the grading because that was a long time.
The idea was that, and I remember this discussion because I think the number was around 20 million to finish the Yellen Park site, and that we could get this done. We could start the design on the other ones. Then as funds became available, then we would move into Yellen Phase 2 to finish.
So Yellen Phase 2 got only $280,000.
Right.
So again, I don't want to get into what you said or what I said. I just ask questions of the council. Well, that's not equitable to you, right?
I agree with you on it. And let me just say that while we agreed last year that we want to finish the parks that we've already started before we decide on any new parks, we've got to finish the ones that we have. And yes, in February, on February 5th, we agreed that we were going to move forward with these parks. But that was before COVID. Our city did not get hit with COVID until a month later. So that kind of changed everything. It changed the finances of the city dramatically. So although on February 5th, we said move ahead with this project, I don't know that spending $3 million right now in a time of COVID, when we have so many other priorities for the city as far as health and welfare of our residents, you know, I think we should postpone this until we see what's going to happen after, you know, after next month. That's just my opinion. So I'd like to make a motion to postpone this until next meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll go ahead and second that.
So Ms. Ben Court and Mr. Bishop want to kick this down to Yellen, okay?
I wouldn't say we're kicking it.
I'll call for the question. All in favor of the motion? I would like a roll call vote, please.
Can I make an inquiry just briefly before we do that? Chuck, are there any contractual obligations that will be impacted by delaying this matter for?
Well, it's going to go up because every day we delay it, it's going up, and that's why it's up this much, but go ahead, Chuck.
Not having a background with this project, being newer to the city, I just wanted to confirm.
It's about half this price when it first came online.
We would have to cancel these bids.
Which is another issue because part of the asking of the council is to let go of the bid number one, which was the lowest bid. I just also would like to get clarification of how the process on bidding really works. Is it the lowest bid, the one that gets the project, as it is the case from my experience? In this case, I believe that part of the voting is to let that bid go away. So what does that do? If the council does not release the bid that would have been awarded, how do they know we're throwing their quote? Does it mean that it has to automatically go back for rebid? Or what, how it cuts that, we're just for clarification again, because that's also part of the action tonight.
Correct.
That's not the motion at hand, though.
Well, it's part of, there's three actions.
Let us clarification.
There are three actions, or I guess four, really. The first is to relieve the bid of urban construction and landscape because of the error in their request to be relieved. The second is to approve agreement with RSB Group for the construction of the park at $2.9 million. The third is to authorize supplemental appropriation of $930,000 from the development fund to the Rancho Vista Park project. And then the fourth is to authorize city manager to sign any agreements with RSB. So those are the four actions. And I guess I would defer to the city attorney as far as the, there are four. As far as I can just read the section of the public contracting code for Section 5103, a bidder shall establish to the satisfaction of the court, I guess the city council, that a mistake was made. A bidder gave the public entity written notice within five working days excluding Saturdays, Sundays, et cetera, after opening the bids of the mistake specifying the notice in detail how the mistake occurred. Mistake made the bid materially different than he or she intended, and the mistake was made in Mistake made the bid materially different than he or she intended and the mistake was made in filing, filling out the bid and not due to an error of judgment or carelessness in inspecting the site, work, or in reading the plans or specifications. In this case, they, they claim that they transferred a number wrong to the, so from, from their, all their calculations to their final bid.
Okay.
So, so is there a cost in super lanes? What, what would be the cost if we delayed this thirty days?
Well, uh, I guess it would be the cost, staff time of going back out and, and rebidding this. I mean, we haven't done anything other than, um, the bid.
I, I finally believe the, the bid would change dramatically in thirty days. I just, you know, I just wanna use.
Have you checked, have you checked concrete lately?
The last thing I wanna do, you know, I just wanna use a little, I wanna exercise some, some physical option going forward until we know what our future looks like. That's all. I, I don't wanna turn down any parks. I don't wanna obstruct anything. I understand the importance of parks and residents having access to parks in their neighborhoods. I just wanna wait thirty minutes, or I'm sorry, thirty days with Ms. Benton Court to figure out what our financial future looks like.
This was already budgeted. I'm gonna make a substitute motion to approve the item.
It was budgeted before COVID. COVID has affected our city.
And it's been worked on since then.
And if you don't think COVID has affected our city, you're incredibly wrong.
Well, madam, I'm here all the time. I absolutely understand that. I have a motion to approve the item as a substitute motion.
Second.
Okay, so can we get a roll call vote, please, on a substitute motion, please?
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Mayor Prochand Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Benton Court?
No.
Councilmember Carrillo?
No.
And Councilmember Bishop?
No.
Okay, so nothing happens then, so can we just bring this back next month then, uh, and we'll revisit it again in a month?
Well, aren't you saying that the bids are, they're by canceled and we have to put it out for bids again?
I think, yeah, I'll, I'll defer to the city attorney, but my understanding is that we would have to cancel these bids tonight. Or, or maybe at the next meeting, I'm not sure which, and then, uh.
Aren't they good for a certain amount of days?
Right. W- w- let us check, uh, Chris, would there be an option, uh, to, uh, relieve number one and see what the, if they tabled it for thirty days to see if the bid is stale and?
There's, there's, there's a possibility of that depending on what the bidding documents require, right? Number one, i- if you look at it, there wasn't, our number two group that was the, uh, focus of the award was in fact the lowest bidder because number one had a mistake in their bid, right? Uh, the concern being is that one, the bids will become stale, right? Because they are for a specific period of time because of cost of materials. But two is that, uh, if, if the directions are tabled for thirty days, are we intending to hold a special meeting at that point? When's our, our next regularly scheduled meeting is when?
November seventeenth.
So we're looking for.
More than thirty days.
Right.
But, or we could have a special meeting. You're, you're correct.
Well, then that's, that's the purpose of the inquiries, whether the direction within the proposed motion as it stands now is to bring back a special meeting, uh, or, and this would be my inquiries, whether there's any opportunity that we can, because this has different facets to it, whether we can make awards, uh, that are sought here and contingent on a review of a final one for a budget. Which is really just waiting until after the first one.
So wait twenty-five years, Chris. We can wait another six weeks.
So it, it, I think it's more cost effective to have it incorporated into our next council meeting instead of having a special meeting, if that's appropriate?
Well, I think it'll depend on what they find from the bidding process and what needs to be released. I don't wanna expose us because of some other agenda going on here. I don't wanna expose us to any further, uh, exposure from litigation from the, uh, from the bidders on this item either. And I wanna make sure that the city attorney, uh, explores those options as well.
And that's something we may have to do and it may be, depending on how those bid forms are created, that we may have a meeting in the next week or two then, as necessary.
All right, let's hook into it.
So rather than canceling the bid tonight, we can go back to the contractor, ask him if they'll extend the bid till past the seventeenth of November. If they agree, then we can treat it that way.
Let it just, let it just, keep us surprised and Mr. Murphy and I, if we need to call a special meeting, we can do that.
Okay.
If they'll put it off, we put it off. If we, you know, have new people sitting up here in November, they can do whatever they want.
Okay.
Okay, item number fifteen, I'm gonna ask to defer that item until the next council meeting. I have no appointment. Item number sixteen, public hearing.
Okay, item sixteen point one, this is the final act of the city council to vacate a portion of east of, uh, West Avenue N eight between Tenth Street West and Fourteenth Freeway. This is a portion of N eight is been deemed to be not necessary for our street improvements and is to be relinquished to the adjacent property owner. And, uh, and, uh, that's, that's really it. It's adopting resolution twenty twenty dash zero nine five ordering the vacation of a portion of N eight. Available questions right now.
Anybody wanna do anything with this?
Can we pause the vote to approve?
I second it.
Can we just as a point of procedure?
Motion to second, any further discussion?
Just as a point of procedure, can we have you open a public hearing on it and then vote to close it and then vote on the approval?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I missed it under. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So we have you down there. Okay, uh, but do we have any public comment on that item, uh?
No, sir.
No, sir? All right. Anybody, uh, I'm not seeing anybody here. All right, so motion to close public hearing, please?
I make the motion to close.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Um, any opposition? Otherwise, so ordered. Okay, um, probably stick on the script here, huh? All right, so I have a staff recommendation to adopt resolution number CC twenty twenty dash zero nine five. Was there a motion?
Yes.
And was there a second?
Yes.
All right, yeah, well, um, we gonna use a machine or you gonna do a roll call vote?
Roll call.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Prochand Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Benton Court?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bishop?
Yes. Yeah, we can agree on something. Excellent. That's, it's just, there's a light at the end of the tunnel.
Every once in a while, huh?
Every once in a while. It's all good. We'll get through it. We'll get through it. Information report from the mayor, council members, and the various committee memberships and meetings attended at public expense.
Mr. Mayor, can I, uh, intervene again?
Sure.
I apologize. Just sticking with the script here, so that item that we were bringing back, I don't know that we had a direction. It just came off the agenda. I think we needed a motion to carry it forward and that is fourteen six.
Do you want me to make a motion to carry it over to our next?
It was a motion in a second, but then there was a substitute motion. We voted on the substitute motion. We need to vote on the original motion, I believe, but.
Well, that, that we did. That was my substitute motion, was to approve the staff recommendations.
That was, that was voted down.
Right.
So we have to, I believe, vote on the original motion in second. We never voted on Laura's original motion.
But does, doesn't the, doesn't it obviate it by the fact that?
No, my original, my original motion was to postpone it until the next council meeting. But we, we didn't vote on it.
Right, I don't know that we need to, but.
Oh, do we need to?
Motion's made. It, it, once it's been satisfied by a second, then it's just gotta be voted on one way or the other.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so who, who made, so backing up, and who, and who made the second?
Councilmember Bishop.
That's right. Okay, so can I get a roll call vote to put this off until the, uh, next regularly scheduled council meeting?
Yes, Mayor Hoffbauer?
No.
Mayor Prochand Loa?
No.
Councilmember Benton Court?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bishop?
Yes. Okay, motion carries. All right, now, going back to the script. All right, A Q and B, Mr. Bishop, you wanna do that?
Yes.
Uh, ABA Q and, let's see. ABA Q and B, the board discussed and voted on various items at the meeting, including acceptance of funding for agricultural replacement measures for emission reductions. Farmer program funds, approval of sixty thousand dollars towards continued implementation of the district's voluntary accelerated vehicle retirement program. Award of six, and we also had an award of sixty thousand dollars to Villa del Sol Sweet Cherry Farms for the replacement of an older diesel tractor with new cleaner technology and approval of contractual agreement with the L.A. Orange County Building Trades and, uh, Construction Council. That was, uh, what we did at our last ABA Q and B meeting.
Okay. Mr. Loa, you wanna handle transit authority, sir?
I attended the meeting, um, it was rather pro forma. Uh, we're in and out of that. We got informational reports regarding the, uh, continuing progress of the AVTA with, uh, electrified transportation. And, uh, I don't have anything further to report.
Okay, there was also a considerable discussion about metro. They wanna go to a free transit fair. Their one point eight, this is, ladies and gentlemen, this is the county transportation agency. It's one point eight billion, that's with a B, billion dollars in the hole. They wanna have free transport, transit and there's no, no, no consideration when we asked, well, how do we, how do we go from one bus to another bus? When we just went to this consolidated tap card system so everybody could use a tap card and, and get their transfers or which, you know, it's like who's on first. So it's, uh, but, but they want our money. So just so you know that. Uh, Contract Cities Association, I'll take that one. Uh, it was all legislative updates and, uh, the propositions that are, that you're seeing on your ballot right now under discussion. Audit committee? No audit committee meeting? No? Okay. Investment oversight, anything?
Are, are they still looking for someone for the audit committee?
I'm sorry, what?
Are you guys still looking for someone for the audit committee?
I can't, I can't even, what?
Are they still looking for someone for the audit committee?
We're, we'll, we'll put that back out, yeah. It's only for a couple of months.
Okay.
And I, I just don't know that there was, people were getting the information. I didn't have a particular problem with the individual. I just think that for only a couple of months, I'd have to come back and do it all over again.
Okay.
It just, you know, and I wanna be able to look at everybody, uh, in December when this comes back up. So, uh, High Desert Corridor, Joint Powers, that's, that meeting's coming up. We haven't had one in the last month. League of Cities, same basic report as with Contract Cities. It's all been legislative and, um, policy committees. We had our, uh, state board meeting today and resolutions are moving forward. And, uh, if you're participating virtually on those meetings the next couple of days, uh, you will get more information there than you ever wanted.
Actually, it starts tomorrow. I think we're, some of us are signing up for that.
Yes, sir. Yep. Um, Sanitation District, I don't think we met, did we?
Oh, we didn't meet.
No, I think it was dark. Uh, North County Transportation Coalition. Um, NCTC. JJ, can you remind me on that one? I, I didn't grab my agendas when I came out of the, uh, office. NCTC, in particular, Mike. Uh, yeah. Help me out here. I left a stack of stuff sitting on my desk.
NCTC, uh, a lot of topics out there. Uh, one of the topics we're gonna talk about is what's happening with the High Desert Corridor. In particular, uh, to develop a right of way and design plan. And also to move forward on approving the record of decision for the environmental document. So we can start purchasing right of way from Victorville to Palmdale. Off the top of my head, that's the main, main topic that comes to mind.
We're looking at the, uh, executive director position
We are.
For the High Desert Corridor, but that's been a topic at NCTC as well.
That is, we're, we're working through, um, the funding, uh, that's gonna happen. If it's gonna be shared between the, uh, member agencies, so we still need to work out the details. But it's, uh, due time for that.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Um, recycle water authority. Still looking at colors and logos or what are we doing?
No, we already did that. It was, uh, a pretty short one. We had a, the, we had two special reports. We had a review of the governor's water resilience portfolio and an update on phase two of our financing. Other than, it was, uh, pretty uneventful.
Okay, uh, Southern California Association of Governments, I can report on the general council, a gen- a regional council, but you're on, uh, HCD, you wanna?
Yes, uh, I'm attending a meeting virtually. And you also, a little bit for the general, um, getting as well. There is gonna be some, uh, funding opportunity, uh, regional for a, uh, project. And talking to staff, I think that, uh, there could be some interest in working with the school districts, all of them in the Antelope Valley, uh, to see we can get some funding, uh, to maybe, uh, think about, uh, developing a housing project. Uh, I hear that, uh, school districts in general have a hard time attracting teachers up here. Uh, one of the reasons is housing. We don't, we don't have sufficient apartments or condos or startup housing for young teachers just coming out of college. So, and, uh, I discussed that with a staff member here in, in the city. And, um, maybe that's something that we wanna look at to see we can, uh, go through the process, the SCAG process to apply for that potential funding, at least for the entitlement. And working with the school districts and the water district and the city, uh, maybe we can identify a site where we can work collaboratively to see we can provide housing, uh, to attract teachers.
This is the, uh, it's called the REAP money, R E A P?
Yes, correct.
And the thing about this is it makes us available to, uh, local councils of government. But the problem is, is that our, the only thing we've got that's remotely close to that is the NCTC, which doesn't qualify because its charter is specifically transit related. So unless we can somehow twist it to say, well, this is for transit housing, we would have no opportunity whatsoever to.
Before one, before you came to the council, we actually had discussed that teachers housing in the past. And so we probably, or, or maybe he can give us an update. So we have, maybe things have changed since then.
Maybe things have changed and I also, uh, when I was at the school district, that's something that I, uh, talked to them about. And the Palmer School District owns some land, uh, by R four and twenty-seventh. I think it's about ten, twelve acres. And that's land that the Palmer School District owns. And I know that the Aguirre School District actually, uh, uh, did this type of project. And that actually in the construction, it's not something that they just talked about. Uh, the Aguirre School District is actually building, uh, housing right now. I don't know the specifics.
Well, I know this one of the things that I've asked Mike to take a look at this. I've been poking around from the regional council perspective. This is one of the things that we've said before is why we need to have a re- uh, a cog up here, specifically to Palmdale and Lancaster and, and perhaps the county with, with town councils as ex-official members on that. Uh, cause they don't have any budget authority specifically. And, uh, because of, of things like this, it keeps slipping, slipping through the cracks. We may be able to, uh, find an opportunity with the school districts or with the high school district, uh, or somebody to maybe, you know, find a way to, to fit the square peg into a round hole. Mike, wanna elaborate on that?
Yes, we, we have floated the idea to SCAG the concept and it's been well received. And they said that it could be administered through the NCTC because we, it's a joint powers authority that's recognized to the North LA County subregion. So we are in district forty-three, I believe?
Forty-three.
Palmdale-Lancaster. Antelope Valley Union High School District covers this entire area, including unincorporated LA County. So this looks like it would be an eligible proj- project. We just have to find, find out what the deliverable will be. So we need to work through that. But I think, I think we have the right concept in mind.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Mayor, if I could add, I met, uh, with the developer this week who is gonna be bringing, uh, maybe two different developments in our city that have, uh, might be ideal, uh, Councilman Carrillo, for what you're talking about with the school district. It's garden style, looks like a single family home, about eighteen hundred square feet. Single story.
Pa- patio homes?
Yeah, and then the back, the ADU is another thousand square feet. Uh, they have a couple of projects, uh, going in, uh, Lancaster and they have two that are gonna come forward. But, uh, I, I, it looks very attractive and, uh, they're gonna have amenities and it's not, as you look at it, it's not like an apartment high rise or three stories and they're, they're going to their apartment. It looks like a home, right? And, uh, I think it's gonna be very well received here, so I'll, I'll get with, uh, uh, the superintendent and, and talk to him about his acreage. And as we're pursuing this project, maybe I'll turn the developer on to, uh, seeing if he'd be interested in a third project here.
Great. I think as we're looking into it, that, that was to be creative and, uh, help, uh, housing that we need here for. I mean, we talked about providing different housing, so, uh, if we can just be creative, look at what the possibilities are and see what their process is with SCAG and see how we can collaborate so that we can attract, uh, teachers that will make a difference in our city.
And, and keep people off that Fourteenth Freeway.
Uh, so that was discussed, uh, discussed at C H D. Um, that's my report.
Okay, Mr. Loa, uh, transportation?
I already did that. A V T A?
No, no, SCAG, transportation.
No, SCAG, well, you know.
R T P, S C S, moving it forward, you know? That's, uh, that's the name of the game there. I think I just did it for you.
Yeah. Thank you.
There goes it. And, uh, at Regional Council, just moving these two things forward. Doesn't look like you're going to get a shot at being on that arena appeals board, though. He's already, he's already picked his, uh, he's, he's picked his, uh, the teacher's pets, well, they're picked, so.
Some do sometimes, yeah.
But you know what? No, no skin off your back, let me tell you.
It's quite a very, very rigorous process.
That is a very, very contentious process, process. And having been through the appeals process and the, uh, review process, man, that is.
Can get raw, yeah.
I, yeah, I'd rather use a cheese grater on my knuckles next time. It is just tough. Uh, U S Mexico Sister Cities, uh, just had some, um, uh, Zoom meeting stuff going on on that. Uh, prison committee?
It was dark.
Okay.
Until further notice.
All right, um, anything else, uh, highlight wise? Uh, I know most of us have got our calendars we're going to turn in. Anybody have any things, um, notable that you want to, uh, get off their chest? That people should know about?
Uh, yes, um, I've, I've been attending, I was invited to attend, um, a local leader's, um, workshops that has to do with, uh, education, and this is through First Five O A. Um, I believe we already had three or four meetings. The idea from this group, this discussion is, is to see how cities can help, uh, improve the education for young kids. The main focus is what's happening with, uh, with COVID. Now that kids are from home learning virtually, how it makes it difficult for middle kids to be able to, uh, focus and not be social because now they're in front of a computer. Through those conversations with them, um, they have actually, uh, started these projects with the city of Pasadena and the city of Long Beach. I forget the, the resolutions or what they called it, but again, it has to do with, uh, promoting, uh, education at the foundation, which is, uh, kindergarten and, uh, pre K. Um, and since we are talking about education in our general plan, I know we focus on bringing a, um, a four-year, um, university and those kind of things, but it really begins at the pre K and, and kinder, where the foundation for our students could really begin. So anyway, I, I, uh, talked to them, see if they would be interested in making a presentation to the council so that you guys hear from them what their vision and what their goal is directly, uh, rather than me telling you, um, a synopsis of what the project and the program is about. Uh, I talked to them and they are interested in coming to make a short presentation, uh, so that, uh, we can know in Palmdale.
Can you get the, uh, information over to, uh?
They were supposed to be here this, uh, this, uh, tonight, actually, but, uh, they could not put a presentation together. Uh, bottom line, they would be interested in being here in November, uh, if that's something that.
Let's see what's on the agenda and we can have the staff coordinate with them, huh?
Yeah, we've been trying to do that.
Okay. All right, anything you want to bring up? Okay, uh, any other meetings that, uh?
Yes, uh, two things I want to bring up for the council. On the weekend of October seventeenth and eighteenth, we are going to do another Weekend of Prayer for Ponce Lane Square, where all these churches still being closed and restrictions. We, uh, met, Marie and I, uh, met with all, all the pastors, and it's something they were calling for, so we're going to open this up again for them. Uh, so there'll be, uh, release going out tomorrow and that. And then, um, on October nineteenth, we'll have our next Mental Health Town Hall. This one's going to be a little different. We partnered with the county's mental health team and, uh, Rosalie, and this will be the first bilingual, uh, mental health town hall. So the first hour and fifteen minutes, I believe, will be in English, and then, uh, all the county staff is bilingual. They're going to do it again in Spanish. So, uh, you know, we're trying to, uh, spread the message, and we're trying to spread it in a language that people are most comfortable listening, is on many different platforms. So I appreciate your support on that.
Mr. Bishop, did you have anything that you wanted to, on, on any other meetings or anything you wanted to highlight?
Just what's, uh, coming up this Saturday on the tenth, uh, Salva's going to be out here doing a food.
Yeah, they're doing it every week, yeah.
Oh, they're doing a food distribution, but I think they're also going to be out here in Ponce Lane Square with the celebration for, uh, Hispanic Heritage Month as well.
Oh, okay.
So there, there will be out City Hall instead of being at the Hammock House.
Oh, all right, so they'll be here instead of there.
It, it's here, they're giving out gift cards, they're giving out, uh, food. Uh, so it's, uh, lo, one of the larger ones that they've had, have done in the past.
Okay.
So it's going to be here this, uh, Saturday.
I'm not even looking that far forward on my calendar yet. Just trying to figure out what I'm doing tonight yet.
Is that at Ponce again, or?
Ponce Lane.
Ponce down in that slice of town?
Uh, yeah. Mr. Loa, any other, any other meetings that you have?
I'm just turning out a report.
Okay, all right. Well, you've had, there's tons of meetings, it's, it's, it's all right here, it's all online. So if, uh, anybody's got any questions, it's like, you know, if there's less than about five of them, it's, it's a slow day, so. Okay, um, let's see, um, city manager, so was there anything else? Was that, was that, Mr. Uh? J J? That was it? Okay. A council request for, uh, new topics to come up. Anybody?
No.
Okay, okay, all right, so let's get out of here, and we'll see you in, well, hopefully. Hopefully, see you in about six weeks.
We'll see, right?
Meeting adjourned, thank you.